Thank you. I'm calling the Wednesday, May 12th, 21 meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission to Order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Irvin.
Present.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
I'm present.
Commissioner Song.
Present.
Vice Chair Maruzzi.
Here, sorry.
Chair Womack.
Present.
If members present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, the agenda was published on Thursday, May 6th. Our meeting has been published in accordance with state law.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Seconded.
That's been motioned and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Song.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Chair Womack.
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Yes.
And Commissioner Irvin.
Yes.
At this point, we are going into public comments. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and Items of General Interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items that have not been agendized. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or the time of the hearing. Members of the public who would like to comment on items 1A, 1B, 4A, and 4B are directed to comment under this section of the agenda. Are there members of the public who wish to testify?
Yes. Sean Lockyer. Hi. So just to be clear, this was for items on the agenda but not new business?
No, it's for new business items because they aren't public hearing items, and therefore you wouldn't have a public hearing at which you could testify.
I see. Yeah, thank you. Just for clarifying. So yeah, so I'm commenting on item 4A, which is the Frank Hickey residence, single-family residence in Desert Palisades.
Yes. I need help.
Hmm. Everything all right there?
Yes, Mr. Lockyer. Go ahead and continue.
Sorry. Thanks, Flynn. Yeah. So there was a couple of staff comments that I know were kicked around and discussed by you all or reviewed by you all. And one of them was Ken's comment about the front facade. Look, it could appear somewhat harsh. And so our comments on that are that we've articulated that street-facing facade nicely, which is the south-facing facade. It is 12 foot tall. It is natural stone and kind of a mosaic pattern, a very tightly set mosaic pattern with little or no grout joint whatsoever. It's been articulated with the blackened steel, actually, black painted steel, vertical ribs, and sort of a very narrow quarter-inch-thick steel picture frame around that front facade. It's also pierced three times, one with a window, very tall, slender window at the powder room, the entry portal, and the overhang for the front entry. The cantilever is out from that front facade on the more eastern side of that facade. And then, once again, with the garage door itself, which is a black steel garage door. The garage door was also item three to talk about. There was a potential, it was a staff comment that the garage door facing the street, which is not recommended by the HOA and the requirements of the specific plan for Desert Palisades. We did try our darndest to locate that garage door along the western side and have a side entry garage door. We actually prefer that for all of our projects or any residents of this caliber in this neighborhood or not. It was somewhat impossible to do here. The lots up there have these no-build easements throughout the project and development. And so there is one on the west-hand side of the building, and that means like no driveway or anything in those no-build easements. And so that became very challenging to locate a driveway and a hammerhead to back out of that garage on that west side of the facade. So extremely difficult. But I actually think that the garage door facing the street here in its design and simplicity and material color actually helps articulate that facade further also. It's another void, and it's a deep wall, and that garage door is set back pretty well in that facade. So I think that actually helps. So that would be my comment on that. The driveway width is also recommended. Desert Palisades is being 14, required to be 14. We have it at 16. That's negotiable. What we did on Lot 50, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but that it's a house we just completed recently there in Desert Palisades also. We had a 16-foot garage door, and we had a 16-foot driveway that we then tapered out to 14 as it neared the, approached the apron at the street. And that's certainly doable here, and be happy to condition for that also. On Lot 50, it actually helped us plant a tree at the southeast corner of that building. So as you drive.
Done. Sean, your pasture through the timeline. So I have to just wrap up, and I'm sure the commission might have questions for you.
Thanks.
Sean, please stay here. I'm sure we'll have questions when the item comes up.
Will do.
Are there other members of the public who wish to speak?
Mike Gray, I would like to comment. It's not working.
It's sensitive.
I can hear you, Greg. Can you even see? Okay, Sean, if you can hear me. This is Greg and Nancy Hickey. We're the of Lot 5. So we're excited about the project. We hope to bring the Desert Palisades into Palm Springs as a house, house is similar to what you've seen at Modernism Week as the Cappy House and the Lockyer, Lockyer House, and also something like what Brett has built two lots down. So we're excited about the project, and thank you for the time. And I just wanted to make those, those comments.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Newell, are there any members of the public who are going to be calling in?
No, we don't have any additional members, Madam Chair.
There being no other members of the public, is there anyone here just before we close public testimony on 4B who wishes to speak? There being no other members of the public who wish to speak, public testimony is closed. We are moving at this point to the consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar. 1A is the approval of the minutes of December 17th, 2020. Commissioner Roberts has requested to be recused on this item, and the 1B is a request for a general plan conformity review of a summary vacation of public utility easements within the vacated Caye Santa Rosa in Section 14. Can I have a roll call, please? Can I have a motion to accept?
Moved.
Is there a second? This has been moved and seconded. Can I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Irvin.
Is Commissioner Irvin with us? He may have disconnected. Ah. Commissioner Irvin, can you hear me? Are you voting in favor of the consent calendar?
Yes, I am.
Madam Chair, the response was in the affirmative.
Thank you. Now, the next item, too, is a public hearing, Desert Palisades, specific plan amendment for revisions of the administrative procedures consistent with recent changes in the architectural review process. We won't have a stat, this is, the staff report will also be the applicant's report as city as the applicant.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, the item before you is a request to amend the Desert Palisades specific plan. This is being done in line with the recent changes that the city has made to its architectural review process. As you'll recall in the discussions at both the Planning Commission and the City Council, we were directed to begin the process to amend specific plans so that those procedures align with the changes that we've recently made to our zoning code. This is the first specific plan before you. We hope to have the downtown Palm Springs specific plan before you within the next meeting or two, and then the Section 14 specific plan will also be coming with similar changes. In terms of the changes to the Desert Palisades specific plan, the only section that we are amending is relative to the review procedures. What we are proposing is that for new single-family residences or major modifications to single-family residences within the Desert Palisades specific plan area, those would be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Committee. So the Architectural Review Committee will have final authority on approval of architectural review for those houses. One of the things that I've also added is should there be any modifications to the development itself in terms of its common areas, such as significant changes to its landscape plan, lighting, any common area amenities or so forth, that those changes would require the approval of a development permit by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission will retain the ability to review any changes that are site-wide, while the Architectural Review Committee will review individual houses within the development. These overall changes are intended to shorten the timeframe necessary to receive entitlements, which is one of the goals of the City Council in proceeding with this effort. There are no proposed changes to the number of units at Desert Palisades or any of the development standards at this time. Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation to you. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Flynn, just so that I understand this better, I understand the intent. I just want to understand what it fully includes. And from what I understand, the AAC will now oversee and review conformity on individual developments or houses within any specific plan?
Within hillside areas and on major thoroughfares. Those are the only types of single-family houses that require any type of a public review, and so the ARC will have the authority to review and approve those.
That will not apply to commercial, like the down specific plan?
No.
Okay, so they will also see to its conformity with respect to the specific plan that it belongs to?
Correct.
Okay, I understand that. My only question, Madam Chair, that I would throw back in this is perhaps we should at least see these houses on our consent calendar simply so that we understand what is happening within these specific plans. Because as these are developed in the future, and I suspect with the way real estate is moving right now, I think we're going to see more development and more specific plans created. So I worry a little bit about the Planning Commission being completely eliminated from these specific approvals. I don't know how I feel about it yet, but I wanted to throw that out as a question to the rest of the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, I kind of share some of Commissioner Roberts' concerns. I would just say that if we're going to empower the Architectural Review Committee, I think the perfect place to start is sort of a test run, if you want to say it, are single-family houses. I'd be happy to look at it again in the future if we think they're going astray. But as far as making the Architectural Review Committee a more important part of the process, at this point, I'm willing to give it a test run.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
I'd like to ask, Flynn, hasn't this issue in question been decided by the City Council?
It has for areas that are not covered by specific plans. So, for example, hillside areas elsewhere in the city that aren't under the Desert Palisades specific plan would be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Committee. That's already in the zoning code. So that is what the City Council has approved.
So do you think that the suggestions of Mr. Roberts and Mr. Hirschbein are conflicted with any of that? Or what are your thoughts?
It would be a different process than what you see elsewhere in the city.
Just for these, for Desert Palisades, that is?
For Desert Palisades, if that's the direction that the Planning Commission wants to go.
Let me think about that.
Is that a question, Mr. Hirschbein, or are you? You're muted.
Flynn, I didn't get what you said. It's departure from what we have now or departure from what you're proposing?
No, it's a departure from what has been adopted elsewhere in the city by the City Council. So if you have a house, for example, in a hillside area, let's say, you know, the Araby Cove area or Kaweah Hills, right now, with the new ordinance in place, those can be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Committee.
Right. And what you're proposing is the same thing for Desert Palisades, right?
Correct. That the ARC would have final review authority over family houses.
So it would conform to the rest of the city hillside areas?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't, okay, thank you.
Flynn, just a clarification. This, in conformity with the streamlining that was done at City Council, any appeals of the AAC decision on these would still come back to Planning Commission?
That's correct.
Does that need to be written into the ordinance?
No, it refers to that process in the language of the ordinance. So it is subject to the standard appeal process, which would be to the Planning Commission.
Are there more questions of staff? There being none, I'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind chiming in about this item. Sean Lockyer here.
You have three minutes, Mr. Lockyer.
Okay, thank you. I think what one of the goals was is to, is to sort of streamline the process and, and remove some of the tasking that's involved. But one of the challenges with the projects, particularly Desert Palisades, is getting through the review process and, and quite frankly, selling real estate up there. There's been several buyers that look at the lengthy review process of, of how these projects get reviewed and approved at Desert Palisades, and that has had a negative impact on their development. So I think, I believe that a streamlining of that, in some senses, following the same rules, adhering to the specific plan guidelines and, and ordinances, and then applying them to the project, putting that in the hands of your fellow commissioners on the AAC, I believe, streamlines that process in a way which would be beneficial to the development of, of Desert Palisades. And I think Michael Hirschbein is right that the, there probably will be another 100 lots sold and developed up there, and, and that is substantial in this, today's climate of real estate. They're flying off the shelves. So, but I think that's a good thing and something we should encourage and stand by and support and help that process along. That's my thought. Thank you, folks.
Is there any, any other member of the public who wishes to speak? If not, the matter is before the Planning Commission. I'm going to start this off with a motion to approve and see if there's a second, and then take discussion from there.
I'm a second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Commissioner Song?
Yes, I, I'm, it's one of those things where we are adopting this new process, and I'm in agreement in the sense that we, the Planning Commission would not be able to see these wonderful projects that are coming along the way, and maybe some of them may not be as wonderful. But the way I was able to settle this matter is that we are also open to participate in the AAC meeting silently, and we also have opportunity to view the application. And therefore, I second this motion because I believe that, that over the last year and a half, pretty much, we have moved the applications to consent calendar because it's a very challenging site, and the clients have hired a very well-qualified professional team to put a design together. So I feel that the AAC will do a tremendous job in reviewing the projects, and I, for myself, will stay in contact with what's going on with AAC to stay in touch with the progress at the Desert Palisades.
Other comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. I'm not opposed to this, and I understand where it would be helpful for everyone concerned to reduce process in any place that we can. I'm more playing devil's advocate. I'm a little bit more concerned about precedent and fallout. So we're now asking the AAC to sort of take on a new level in what they do, which is something more the Planning Commission would have done in the past, which is check conformity to a specific plan. Now, obviously, our staff will do that to the nth degree. But sometimes there's questions in that. My other concern is that I would, I certainly understand developers wanting their land to sell faster and their houses to sell faster and being able to sell the benefit of a leaner process. My concern is any other hillside house would still have to come through the full process of the AAC and the Planning Commission, wouldn't it?
No.
No? Okay. So it would only, this would only come to us normally because it's a specific plan?
No. With the change in the process, hillside houses, what we're intending to do citywide is hillside houses will be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Committee.
All of them?
Yeah.
All of them, not just in the specific plan?
Correct.
Okay. That I wasn't clear on. Okay, so yeah, for me, it really comes down to conformity. It's not about getting to enjoy the projects, because of course, you know, what, what Commissioner Song says makes sense. We can find them on our own anytime we want and look at them. To me, it was just a concern about shuffling what the different boards and commissions do, and will that create any conflict later? And perhaps it won't. Perhaps this is an easy, an easy adjustment. I guess only time will tell.
Do you have, Flynn, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, actually, one of the things that we are committed to do by both Planning Commission and City Council is, once we've had the new procedures in place for 12 months, we'll come back to both Planning Commission and City Council and review the effectiveness of these changes and see if there are any updates that may be needed. One of the things I always caution when you adopt a new ordinance, it's not going to be perfect right out of the box. And so there are tweaks and corrections that you have to make along the way. So we do expect to come back to you in July of 2022 with a report and input from Planning Commission and City Council on how the process is working. So we'll continue to monitor it over the next year.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Thanks. That, that, thanks. That brings up an interesting question. So will there be metrics in our next July? Like, will we know how long the average approval process took place pre-change and then post-change?
We can certainly provide that for you, yes.
Because that's, that's the goal of all these changes, is to speed it up. And so it'd be nice to know whether it's working or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Are there any more, is there any more discussion on the motion? There being none, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Womack?
Here, Wormit.
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
The motion passes, um, the item passes unanimously. There is no unfinished business and we're going into new business. Uh, 4A is Greg Hickie owner proposing construction of a 3,946 square foot single-family residence on a hillside lot located at 2274 Winter Sun Drive uh, in the deserts of Pacific, which is within the desert um, Palisades specific plan. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me share my screen and I'll provide a brief uh, uh, slide presentation for you on this application. Do you see the PowerPoint presentation now?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a single-family residence on a hillside lot in Desert Palisades. The uh, project site is located on the northerly part of the Desert Palisades um, project. Uh, it's a um, it's a rocky site, as most of them are up there, with a grade change of roughly 20 feet from west to east. There's a boulder berm along the north side of the lot, which buffers views of these homes from tramway. And the project has a naturalized landscape design that is proposed, which you'll see shortly. Uh, here is the site plan. And as you can see, the home is basically an L-shaped project uh, with uh, views and things oriented toward the uh, basically toward the east. Uh, there's a large terrace area that exists in the center part of the lot. Uh, as um, Mr. Lockyer mentioned earlier during public comment, the garage is located on the west westerly part of the lot. And due to the topography and uh, conditions there, they originally had the garage entering from the side here at the north or the west, but uh, we're unable to make that work. And so we have a driveway that's taking direct access from Winter Sun Drive. While this is not a site that is going to be masqueraded, it is not allowed in Desert Palisades. This uh, project by nature of the overall plan is going to require a considerable amount of grading to be occurring. What's important to note is, and let me first of all show you some of the elevations. So um, number one here is the street elevation, and then two and three are the north and west, and then number three here is the east elevation. So the home is basically comprised, as you see it along the street, with this very large uh, rock wall, which has a series of uh, punctures or openings in it, this one being for uh, pedestrians coming up to the front of the home, and this, of course, is for the garage. This shows you the general site section as it's looking south. So this is the upper side or the westerly side of the um, property here on the on the right, and it slopes downward toward the uh, east, as you can see here. This area right here is the swimming pool, and I'll speak briefly later on about this particular retaining wall. This is the um, material uh, package for this. And uh, as you can see, the uh, basic color of the home is what is called dove gray, which is basically a white color. And then there's accent walls where the pocket doors occur that will be done in this very dark charcoal gray. This is a look at the rock material that's proposed for that front wall. And then these areas are to demonstrate or show the texture of the concrete terraces and surfaces that you see. They will not be this brown color. They will be this basic concrete gray color. And then, of course, where there is wood occurring, it's in these kinds of colors. And this is the color of the um, the trim as uh, uh, Mr. Lockyer was explaining around the stone walls and around other parts of the project. So I want to just talk briefly about some of the challenges and concerns, and some of these were also mentioned by um, Mr. Lockyer. So the driveway width in the street-facing garage door, it's because Palisades limits driveway width to 14 feet and encourages garage doors to be oriented away from the street. As Mr. Lockyer mentioned, this particular one does have the driveway coming up to the street. It's uh, I had identified it as being eighteen feet wide. He corrected it and noted that it is 16 feet wide, and he has also noted that they would be willing to reduce it to the 14 feet to conform. The over height issue that was mentioned in the staff report, and there's a little illustration uh, in your staff report on um, one of the later pages, page uh, five, uh, that shows there's a little tip of the um, uh, master bedroom terrace roof at the northeast uh, part of the site that slightly extends above that 18-foot height pillow, which is part of the height measurement for Desert Palisades. But it does conform to the overall 25-foot maximum overall height of this particular project. Uh, color, the Desert Palisades specific plan notes that the color should reflect the indigenous desert colors found in the surrounding landscape and recede and blend. Uh, generally, the rock wall in the front of this property project does just that. However, the house behind it, as you note from the earlier elevations, is primarily an off-white or dove gray house, which will be in contrast with the um, adjacent uh, uh, desert surroundings. And then also on uh, the front wall concern or question, Desert Palisades specific plan notes that uh, large unbroken wall planes comprised of a single material should be used judiciously. And this was discussed with the um, Architectural Advisory Committee when this was reviewed. And they looked at various options and discussed with um, the applicant's architect, uh, whether there might be ways of reducing this or modifying it. But ultimately, they did recommend approval as it is presently presented to you. And we've noted uh, through our conclusions and analysis through the various tables in the staff report, that it does generally conform and is generally consistent with the design guidelines um, for Desert Palisades. So we've recommended approval with conditions, pervious concrete uh, and joints for the driveway and terrace, consistent with the Desert Palisades specific plan, providing screening at the seven-foot-high easterly wall of the pool, which you see here. And then the plant palette that is to conform to the Desert Palisades specific plan and to that plant list that was previously approved by the Homeowners Association in Desert Palisades. I want to show you briefly a a series of images that the uh, architect has provided uh, that helps illustrate the image of this home as you approach it, uh, driving uh, west on Winter Sun Drive. So the series of images you're going to see um, are are the progression as you approach the house after you've entered the gate into the Desert Palisades community. So as you enter from this sort of stepped area you see here is an illustration representing Winter Sun Drive. There you see the house in the distance, and I'm going to slowly through these images bring you forward to the home. So this area back here, just as a point of interest, that's the little uh, cantilevered roof at the master bedroom terrace. This is the corner here that just slightly protrudes above the 18-foot pillow. And as you approach the house, again, the wall comes into view and you begin to understand the function that the wall acts in terms of screening the outdoor terrace areas from a view from the street. Oops, sorry. And here you have approached the house and you're now looking at it straight on. Uh, the opening here is the portal through which a pedestrian would uh, arrive into the home. Once you pass through this opening, you take a turn and then you are into the public area of the home. And then as you continue driving westward, you begin to pass by the home. And these are the views that you get as you continue westward on Winter Sun Drive. And there you see the house revealing itself uh, behind that rock wall. Continues in that view as well. So that's the ending of my slide presentation. Um, as noted, we are recommending approval on this uh, house uh, because we do believe that the conformance issues are generally there. Um, we had gone through a series of um, very important reviews on the um, grading on this particular project. As Sean alluded to briefly, uh, when this originally came in, uh, much of the grading on that western side of the project was actually in the buffer zone area. And as noted, the Palisades specific plan notes that those buffer areas are to be remained untouched, undeveloped and natural. And so this project achieves that goal. Um, that concludes my staff report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. And as noted, Sean, the architect and the Hickies are both available here if you have any further questions of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time? There being none, I have one.
I think Member Song has a question.
Yes, Commissioner Song.
Thank you. Um, uh, Ken, thank you for uh, the presentation. So the front yard setback uh, by the specific plan is 25 feet. The the um, design is uh, the front uh, wall is anywhere between 35, 36, 37 feet. Um, and the reason for that pushback is what you just mentioned at the end of your um, conclusive statement that it it they're not supposed to uh, vary their natural grading of the site. So is that the reason why the building setback, the actual building setback is much more than what the 25-foot requirement is?
Well, I'm going to need the uh, architect to clarify that for you. My understanding on it is that the placement of this house uh, pushed a little bit further back from the front yard setback was necessary because of the topography and the enormous amount of boulders that are happening toward the uh, frontage portion of that uh, lot. But um, I would ask Sean to clarify that, find that for you if you have further questions on it.
Okay, I I wanted to understand if the specific plan of front yard setback of 25 feet is not really considering the uh, conditions of that um, of the specific, of the Desert Palisade. That that was really where I was trying to evaluate if 25 feet is actually not enough uh, when it comes to these kinds of sites. But I I understand to wait until Sean could respond to this
Okay.
question.
Um, let's, Maria, before we go to Mr. Lockyer, I want to see if there are other questions of staff, and then I'll ask him to come up. Are there other questions of staff? I have one, which is the trees. Are they old-growth olives?
Uh, I don't know if they're old-growth olives, but they are olive trees that would be brought into this site.
And there's no condition that the size on those relates to the size that we're being shown in the drawings?
I'm I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Uh, there isn't a condition that says what the size of the trees is?
Well, the trees are specified in the um, landscape plan, and if you give me just a moment, I'll clarify that for you. So the olive trees are a 36-inch box tree. They're required to be 12 to 14 inches in height, and there's one of them proposed. The other tree is a uh, desert ironwood, which is also a 36-inch box. There's a quantity of five of those. And then uh, the other uh, lesser trees, uh, the acacia palva uh, blanco is a 24-inch box, and the ponytail palm is also.
Thank you. Uh, and then the other question is, you suggest the driveway be permeable, but you don't require it. Is there a reason for that?
That's the way that the guidelines for Desert Palisades are noted. We've put it in as a condition of approval to to require it, but it's a guideline item.
So you have it in as a condition of approval for the joints, but not for the concrete?
Uh, let me verify that for you, Madam Chair. Hold on just a moment. Uh, Planning Commission, or Planning Approval Number Number 11, pervious concrete, the concrete on the driveway and pool terraces must have permeable joints, and it is encouraged that the concrete also be permeable but not required.
Right. Uh, are there any other questions for staff? Then I think we may have some questions for Mr. Lockyer if he's here.
Yes, I'm I'm available.
Commissioner Song had a question. Do you understand it or do you need me to repeat it?
I I'd like it if she could repeat it, please.
Um, Good evening, Sean.
Hi.
Hi. So the specific plan requires a 25-foot setback for the front yard, correct? Um, the building is uh, well-placed in the 36, 38-foot uh, setback. Was that placement because you were restricted to keeping most of the site with this natural makeup?
Not 100% part of the reason, and and we I just measured in our AutoCAD site plan drawing that the the distance varies from the property line to the corners of the front facade between 30 feet, six and a half inches, and 36 feet. Roughly.
Uh huh.
So uh, one of the reasons for that is the uh, the pad height and the steepness of the driveway at that west end was was a challenge. And the minimum slope for that driveway was a challenge. And and there's kind of two slopes there. It has to slope away from the garage door for a certain distance and then back out towards the street. Um, so so that was one of the reasons for pushing that house further back.
Um, and Sean's second question is, do you normally guests just park along the driveway uh, in this uh, Desert Palisades setup? I know there's guest parking in certain locations.
Yeah, that's true. That's that's the plan, that there there is not a lot of parking allowed. There is an apron that's that's upgraded and and naturalized along the roads there where guests tend to park, from my experience up there, but that is the goal, that they will park in the driveway and that there's not a lot. One of the nobildismens is is along that seven-foot apron there, so it doesn't allow for a lot of guest parking in there in that development along and other places besides the driveway or adjacent.
And um, last question, it's about the condition for the screen on the uh, swimming pool, and it's more of of uh, what a pity because it's 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 just such amazing view. Um, and uh, have you given, have you given any thought of how you could meet that requirement or that condition?
Yeah, so and on this project, we think it's actually a bit easier because of the drastic slope. Um, there there was another item that I don't know if that jumped out at anybody, but it was something that Ken had brought to our attention, and it's in our conditions of approval. That the renderings on page the elevation rendering, it was one of the first slides Ken went to. It's actually page 13 of our whole clip. And if you look at rendering number three on that sheet, there's there's four renderings there. Item three shows you know, that east elevation, we're looking west back towards the pool and the house. Uh, one of the conditions of approval there is that we don't do what we're showing there with the east end of the pool. And that we we naturalize that slope and don't have any wall visible greater than three feet in height from the top of that pool. And we actually think that's a pretty good condition and something we've been able to do successfully on these projects. But what it does outline is that there there is potential to put a pool barrier lower there that would not obstruct the view, at least in front of that pool area and the major view corridors there, and then kind of step it up and terminate it back towards the west to create that liability um, mitigation.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there other questions of Mr. Lockyer? I have uh, one is you said you could bring the driveway into 14 Do you want to do that, or is there a good reason to keep it at 16 feet?
I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Uh, it's a question of the driveway?
Oh, I see.
Said you could bring it into 14 feet. Is there a reason to bring it in to narrow it down, or do you prefer to keep it? Is there a reason you made it at 16 feet?
I I think we prefer to keep it at 16 feet because it it allows for other cars, guest cars, or or a homeowner's car to be left out in the driveway and still get past it in a clean effort out to the street. Um, but it's it's certainly possible to taper it on one side or both.
And um, in terms of the permeability of the concrete, are you intending to have permeable concrete?
Yes, that's another condition that staff placed on the project and we we have control joints planned for a minimum of every 150 square feet. So it could be a 10 by 15 area, but we think we're going to have a two-inch gap of concrete and create that. It it would be more of, we tend to do those plans during construction for the concrete crews, and so it's a control and expansion plan. But we would have a two-inch expansion joint with gravel in between. with gravel in between and sort of a grid pattern.
And so it would give a permeability?
Yes.
And then my last question is, in your drawings, you show full-growth trees, very similar to what we think put in Maryland. I would like to see a condition in this where the trees are actually, they come in at this size, and I think they, in their placement, they soften, it helps soften the wall on a front-on view. And I just wanted to raise that to you before I suggest that as a condition.
Yeah, that wouldn't scare us a bit. We hand-select those olive trees and ironwoods, but particularly the olive trees. We tend to bring those down in batches from Fresno area, and they are old growth, and we select the gnarly trunks, tag them, and bring them down for several projects at a time. So that's fine with us.
Thank you. There are no more questions of Mr. Lockyer. I want to take this back. I am sensing that this is a question.
Madam Chair, we're having a hard time hearing you.
We're having trouble hearing you. I think you need to get closer to the speaker or microphone or something.
I don't know why, because it's up to full, full sound.
That's better.
That's better? Okay. I'm not sensing, I'm going to take this back to the commission and possibly start this with a motion to approve, and then have discussion based on that. I'd like a couple of conditions. I would actually like to approve it as is with the condition that the ironwood and the olive be old-growth trees in approximately the sizing that is shown on the renderings. I wouldn't impose any other conditions on this, and I don't know if there's a second to that.
I'd second that.
Great. Comments?
Since I seconded it, I wouldn't mind making a comment.
Please.
I'm just excited that there's quite a variety of facades that are being proposed and approved up in desert palisades, because we don't want a lot of these modern-inspired houses to look alike. And I'm impressed by the variety of options that Sean's firm has been coming up with, and this is one I wouldn't have thought of, and I think it's great. And I'm pleased that it takes a nod, obviously, from the natural environment by being a rock wall, but also with the steel frame, it just makes it into a sculpture. So I'm just very pleased with that, and I'm glad that we're seeing a lot of variety in facades up there.
Commissioner Song?
Yes, I'm in agreement. I do want to make a clarification, but before that, I want to also add to Commissioner Maruzzi's, is that it's hard to tell on the rendering, but all those rocks will give these wonderful shadows and shades, and the wall will really be very organic and natural. And so kudos for coming up with that unique design. But having said that, Madam Chair, clarification on the common, correct, I'm sorry, condition about the treatment of the surrounding around the pool. I believe Sean has agreed to what was recommended. Is that part of this motion, or is your motion to also let the applicant design creatively without the condition?
I would probably let them design without the condition, but I would take advisement on that. Is that what you are suggesting?
Yes, that's what I was suggesting.
Commissioner Maruzzi, do you agree with that?
I do.
And are there other comments? I have one, which is, I really want to thank Mr. Lockyer for the presentation that brought us to and from the property. It really added context to what somebody would see as they're driving to it straight on and driving away from it, and it was very helpful to the wall in perspective.
Yeah, thanks. A team effort here. The guy who did it is sitting next to me over here in the microphone. Thank you.
There being no other comments, shall we call the question?
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbaum?
Yes.
And Commissioner Urban?
Yes. Congratulations.
Chair, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Yeah, just in closing, again, I think Palm Springs is lucky to have an architect of this caliber practicing in our community, but it's unfortunate that there's not more public commissions that he's getting, and if there's anything anybody can do about that, I think the city would be better off for it. So I look forward to some more public buildings or semi-public buildings coming out of your studio.
Michael, you're our new marketing president.
You know, at the end of my street, a Cody Place is a great big commercial area that's vacant and needing of some good design.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for noticing the work, and it's a team effort, and we love it. So glad you guys are paying attention and appreciating.
Thank you. This matter is unanimously approved. Congratulations. And to the hickies, if you invite us to the opening, we would love it.
I'm sure we can talk them into that.
I just hope that it's in the next year, year and a half, Sean.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
The next item is 4B, National Sign and Marketing Present, representing Pilot Flying J for a sign program to establish sign criteria for the multi-tenanted fueling station located at 6605 North Indian Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. What I'd like to do is share the screen, if I could. Just a brief slide presentation here. Can you all see that? Okay, great. Okay. So just to orient the commission as to where we are, the Flying J Pilot Gas Station is at the corner of North Indian Canyon Drive and Garnet Road and Interstate 10. This is an aerial photograph showing how the property operates with the passenger vehicles fueling station and the convenience store towards Indian Canyon, and then the truck station fueling towards the rear or the new I-10 off-ramp on the going eastbound. So just some brief photographs of current conditions. The site recently received a minor architectural approval from staff to redo the shopping center, or the center, removing the mansard roofs and adding more modern elements and a repaint to the building. This side is facing Garnet, and as I mentioned, it's a multi-tenant sign, and the sign program will identify the tenants within the building, including the south-facing sign, which is where the Wendy's drive-up window is, and then two freestudy monuments and one pylon sign along Interstate 10. So the project went to AAC twice on April 19th and then on May 3rd, and at the May 3rd meeting, they made the recommendation that a new monument sign that is to be on the west property line have a border at the base consisting of hardscaped rocks, and I'll go over that in just a minute. I'll show you the design for that sign, and then also material behind a new wall graphic to match the wall surface. So let me go through some of these slides. So the pylon, the new monument sign that the AAC wanted boulders and rocks around the bases, I'm going to point to it, it's the sign I. So when you come off the I-10 off-ramps, which exit onto Garnet Road, the pilot complex would like to have a sign, a new sign located here, this letter I, to alert trucks and passenger vehicles that they, that this is the pilot shop, the pilot shopping center. There currently is a pylon sign that's 24 feet wide at the corner of North Indian and Garnet, and it's roughly 650 feet from the corner of Indian to where this new sign would be located. At many times, there are vehicles, trucks, that are waiting to turn into the fueling station, and the pilot operator feels that this sign will alert passenger vehicles and trucks that the pilot station is on, is coming up. So there's a series of signs that they're proposing on the building itself, and I'll go over those in a table that is shown in the staff report. So on the front facade, there's a pilot sign, a Wendy's, a PJ Fresh, Cinnabon, and then a food graphic sign, which was the question of the AAC. All of these signs, they meet the size requirement. However, the sign ordinance only allows one sign per frontage that faces the street. So obviously, there are more signs on the building than what the code would allow, and a sign program gives them the ability to ask the planning commission to approve the sign program. So along Garnet Road, there's a Wendy's sign that conforms the size, and then there's a Wendy's sign that faces the truck fueling station, then that does not face a street frontage at all. So that is a sign that would not be permitted unless the sign program was approved. There's a monument sign that faces, that is currently at Garnet and Indian, and that includes a pilot double-space sign, the electronic pricing, a Wendy's, Cinnabon, and the overall height of that sign is 24 feet, and that is existing. They're proposing a new sign at the Garnet West property line that is a pilot double-sided sign, the electronic pricing, and the height is only 14 feet. When the sign went to the AAC, the proposal was the same as the one on the corner of Indian and Garnet, which is a total height of 24 feet. They've lowered the sign to 14 feet. Normally, a sign, a monument sign would not be allowed higher than eight feet, but they're asking for 14 feet, once again, for visibility reasons, because several times, there are trucks that are lined up on Garnet and trying to enter the fueling pump area. And then there's a billboard freeway sign that's tall and contains the pilot Wendy's and the pricing, and that's mainly to alert vehicles along the I-10 that the pilot station is at the interchange. So this is the facade that faces the passenger fueling. You'll see that there's a pilot sign, Wendy's, PJ Fresh, Cinnabon, and then a wall graphic, which I'm circling right here. The applicant believes that this graphic that shows food that's available inside the pilot convenience store is important to their marketing, and these signs will be 50 square feet each. When it first went to AAC, the sign was the entire frame underneath these gooseneck lights, and AAC felt that weathering, fading, tearing would, could possibly not be very attractive, so they wanted to split the sign out into two signs so that they could be swapped out if any damage were to happen. And then the back of this frame, AAC wanted to make sure that the color matches the rest of the building. So on this, the design of the building, they, it is a series of ceramic tiles that are a brown color, and this would be a stucco color that matches the stucco of behind the PJ Fresh and the Cinnabon. This is the sign that faces Garnet Road with the Wendy's. The sign, this side is not changing, other than there are several of these small moniker signs that qualities our recipe, welcome drivers, and so forth. And this is a side that faces the truck fueling. Just to go through these, this is a close-up of the revised sign showing the food graphic, and this is the monument sign that they're proposing at 14 feet, three inches, and AAC would like that the sign just not be planted in the ground, that there be a border and rocks and rubble around the bottom of the sign. And this is the existing sign, which is already there, and they proposed this height, and the AAC wanted a lower sign. So Chair, that concludes my report. Staff feels that the three findings can be made by the planning commission, and I want to say that the applicant was very much involved in the discussions at AAC, both meetings. I've emailed them today about attending tonight's meeting. I'm not sure why they're not here, but I don't want that to take it as a, the commission that they're not interested in getting the sign program approved. So I'm available to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? There are seeing no question, oh, Commissioner Song?
Chairwoman, could I ask Glenn one more time about the tall signage? What is the applicant proposed, and what is AAC propose as an alternative? It wasn't clear to me, and that seems to be the most sort of eye-popping element.
All right, let me share the screen real quick again. So when the project went to AAC the first time, this is the sign that the applicant wanted, which was 24 feet, which is the exact same sign that's currently at Garnet and Indian. So the AAC felt that this sign was too tall, that it wasn't needed to have, the top would be a pilot, and then Wendy's, and then there'd be this marquee here that could change the text, and then Cinnabon. So the AAC requested that the sign be lowered and made smaller, and the applicant was willing and to do that, and came back within a week of reduced size.
Thank you, Glenn.
Are there other questions? And the applicant is not here, is that correct?
I don't see them on the call.
The matters before the commission, seeing not a lot of questions of staff, I would take a motion on this and then discuss it as a motion if there is one. Commissioner Maruzzi?
I would motion to approve as presented. I was the representative for the planning mission on this item for AAC two weeks ago, so I can just speak to it in a moment.
Is there a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have discussion on the motion? Commissioner Maruzzi, you had comments.
Just, they thought about this very carefully, and they had a good dialogue with the applicant, and I thought it was, it brought out all the issues of concern, and I think they came to a good agreement and conclusion. So it wasn't as if this was done quickly. It really was carefully thought. This was the second time it came before the AAC.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Chair Womack?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbaum?
Yes.
And Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Thank you. This motion passes unanimously. We're moving right along to planning commission reports, requests, and comments. Commissioner Maruzzi?
Just to make sure Mr. Priest is still there. I want to find out how often we're going to get an update on, you know, the status of some of these projects, where I guess the building department is doing some research and is going to get back to, I guess, the attorney about this. Is it going to be monthly, quarterly? Do you have any sense of how often we'll get an update?
Well, I can provide you an update, if you'd like, on a monthly basis, if that's the commission's pleasure. As for how frequently building is communicating with my colleague in code, communicating with my colleague in code enforcement, I don't know. She's handling that specifically. What I can tell you is the two cases that we outlined in the memo at the last meeting, those are still being investigated. It sometimes takes a while to gather the information so that code enforcement attorney can then go to court and pursue remedies. I do have a piece of good news that I can share with Bispak Tutova. Apparently, we just got word the other day that the bankruptcy court- Apparently, we just got word the other day that the bankruptcy court lifted the stay on that. And so now we can move forward with code enforcement action.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Good to hear that. Thank you.
Can you tell us what that means, Jim?
Yes, certainly. Code enforcement lawsuits, like any other lawsuit, if you're suing a business, once that business files for certain types of bankruptcy, the federal court supersedes anything going on in state court. And what bankruptcy will do oftentimes is put a stay on any lawsuits, any proceedings, just stop, status quo, till we can assess values of assets, debts, and figure out how best to deal with the, what they call the bankruptcy estate, all the property that's being assembled to pay debts at that point. There are certain findings and standards the court makes to impose the stay and then can release the stay on certain actions based on the facts of the case. In this case, the federal bankruptcy judge said, I'm lifting the stay on this so the city can proceed in state court on the code enforcement matter.
And, and what would be the, I mean, what would be a favorable outcome to the city on that?
Well, you know, that, that could be possibly demolition of the existing structure. It could also be the owner ultimately completing the structure and operating it. Our position would be that if the owner is not going to construct the hotel, finish it, that we would prefer to demolish that frame that is up and bring it back down to surface land. But again, you know, we'll see what happens with that. You know, code enforcement is sometimes a dance. You know, you're using the legal process to get the developer owner to do the right thing. And sometimes it may result in demolishing the structure in question. It may be getting the owner to finish.
And could the owner lose the property in the bankruptcy proceedings?
The owner may be required to sell the property and then liquidate the, liquidate the cash and then paid debts. I, I don't know all the particulars of the bankruptcy case at this point, but it's a possibility.
Thank you.
On the same line, newspapers reported that the Hondas going forward. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, you will have an agenda item on your next agenda where the applicant will be bringing forward a minor modification to the approved plans for the Hondas. So based on that action, yes, the project is moving forward.
Just in terms of reports, I think, I don't know if everyone here was informed that Commissioner Lewin has submitted his resignation from the commission for personal reasons. And just wanted to inform you of that, which is why he's not with us tonight. And he regretted resigning, but he has, it was a family matter.
Sorry to hear that. Our best to his family.
He's expand, what's happening is Paul is expanding his family. His third child is about to be born.
Oh.
So I think it's very good news as opposed to, you know, a family tragedy issue, so.
Forgive my assumption.
Good luck, good luck to him. Wish him the best.
Yes, he has two toddlers and he will have, he's about to have an infant.
He's going to be busy.
Bedtime and dinnertime is planning commission time. So we all wish him the best and will miss him. On a, on a different note, reporting back on code enforcement, I, my letter will go to city council at the point that, just before they decide the new budget, but they were having a discussion on adding six code enforcement officers. So I did testify at the last meeting as an individual, but reported the information that we learned in terms of the current hours of code enforcement for cannabis and a concern about a, a particular business that has had 90% of the complaints and that they haven't been shut down for odor, odor issues. So I did communicate a need for additional enforcement to the, the city council.
How many staff they're going to assign to that?
They were adding, they, the proposal was to add two additional code enforcers and to charge the existing cannabis businesses for the cost of those, of that enforcement. There is some discussion about it because they had proposed six additional, four additional for vacation rentals, and there was some discussion as to whether one or both needed. I think there was unanimity from what I heard that there was a need for more enforcement for cannabis. But there was a discussion on the other item. And it's, it's still, Flynn has a better grasp on it, and it's, it's still moving forward, but it hasn't been approved.
Correct. There will be another discussion on the matter on the May 27 city council meeting.
I would hope that they would add.
Go ahead, finish.
I was just saying, I would hope that they would add them to different hours than the normal nine to five, because a lot of stuff happens after hours, so. Think the complaints were coming in after hours, early and later.
And, and I did communicate that, and my letter will also reinforce that.
Two, two, two items is the process of reopening. Where, where is the city compared to the county and so on? And then the second one is from Director Flynn. How's the process going in finding the staff who would do the early development review with architectural and urban planning background?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and address both of those issues. By opening, I'm assuming you mean the opening of city facilities? So City Hall, we intend to open early in the month of June, and so that's when we anticipate opening to the public again. Other city facilities, such as the library, has already opened to the public. There are a number of recreation facilities that are in the process of opening up to the public as well, so you will see that rolling out. However, at this point in time, the city council has not discussed when we'll go back to in-person meetings. So stay tuned. I'm waiting to hear what they determine on when that will occur for the city's boards and commissions. In terms of the second question, looking at staffing, as I had indicated, hopefully at one of the previous meetings, that we do have a principal planner with an emphasis on architecture and urban design scheduled as part of the upcoming city budget, which would take effect on July the 1st. So I can't request or put that position out to be advertised until after July the 1st. But trust me, I will have that ready to go, to submit to our human resources department as soon as I possibly can. As we will definitely need that position to assist us with our pre-submitting conferences and to assist with these new procedures.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Thank you. I, I had, I had three questions actually, or comments. In terms of filling Commissioner Lewin's seat, is there any notion of, of how long that process will take?
It is my assumption that the city council will be filling vacant seats on boards and commissions before the end of June. They, I believe it's their intent to have all boards and commissions full when we start the new fiscal year on July the 1st.
So will they go through the review process again, seeing as how they just did it recently?
Yeah, I don't know if they have new applicants for the boards and commissions. I would imagine that they may conduct additional interviews.
Okay. And then in terms of the fulfillment center, is there any movement on that?
No, there hasn't been any movement on that.
Okay. And then this is more, this is a comment and then I guess a question. You know, in COVID, we allowed restaurants to encroach on the public right of way for their dining, which is a great idea. I mean, it really enlivens the streetscape, in my opinion. However, they all have a real kind of temporary, haphazard sort of ad hoc look to them. And collectively, I don't think they're doing a lot for the cityscape, for the streetscape. And I was wondering if there's any way, I don't know if it's planning commission or planning staff or council needs to address this, but it seems to me we need design standards for those. Maybe we have actually a, a standardized look so that, you know, there's sort of an overall look when you're looking down Palm Canyon or Indian. So that it's not a big hodgepodge, which it is now. I get that, you know, under an emergency situation, everybody's reacting quickly and they just throw it up and that's what they got. And that was fine, but now it looks like we're moving into a more permanent or maybe semi-permanent situation. And these structures need to reflect a, a more intent, more design intent to them. And maybe we need to hire an outside design consultant to help us with guidelines that would, or even a specific design. I mean, I know Mr. Lockyer probably has some time to address that, but there must be other people that we can look to to do that.
So in response, Commissioner Hirschbein, you've hit all of the issues that have been concerns for city council as well. They are tentatively scheduled to discuss the Parklets, as we're calling them, at the June 10th city council agenda. And so you might look for that on the city council agenda and offer your comments on the matter to the city council. They will be looking at things such as design standards or whether or not to continue the process as we've done currently. So public input is certainly encouraged on the matter for those who feel that they contribute or those who feel that better design standards are needed.
How, how does staff feel about it?
I agree that they do add life to our public rights of way and to our streetscape, but agree that additional design standards would be desirable so that there is a standardized look and approach to those.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Are there any other planning commission reports or requests or comments? There being none. Oh, Commissioner Urban?
Yeah, I just have a question. I did not get to hear the results of the 4th of July. I know it was on the agenda. What was the results of the 4th of July ceremonies?
So the vote was that there will not be fireworks on the 4th of July, and they'll look at alternatives.
Planning director's report?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of issues for you. Number one is relative to our meeting on May the 26th. We would like to have a study session on that date that would begin at 4:00 PM. Will that pose a challenge for any of our commissioners in terms of an earlier meeting time?
I'm the only person who may have a conflict, and I won't know it until that day. I'm assisting my sister with her first chemo appointment. And it's set for three hours and 10:00 in the morning, and I'm assuming I will be available.
Okay. The matter that we'll have at the study session is we've had a schematic design submitted to us for a site on North Palm Canyon where the applicant would like to do a mixed-use project, which would include a commercial element, affordable housing and market rate housing. One of the things I'd like the planning commission to look at is relative to the massing of the project and how it orients to the street. So that's one of the reasons why I want to bring it to you is to get the input of the planning commission on those issues. But I also think there's some larger policy issues that this helps to illustrate. And that is relative to the proposed density of the project, which I think could be more dense in terms of the number of residential units, parking issues and things like that. So not only is it really to look at a specific project relative to its urban design, but also to address some of the larger policy issues and how we accommodate affordable housing or even housing in our commercial corridors. So I look forward that, to that discussion with the planning commission on the 26th. The only other thing that I wanted to say was just to thank Commissioner Lewin for his service on the planning commission. I'm so very sorry that we have lost him. And, but understand that commitment to family is an important thing, especially when you have three young ones at home. So we wish him all the best and hope that he will return to public service soon. So thank you, Paul, if you're out there. Other than that, that concludes all the items that I have, Madam Chair, and thank you to the planning commissioners for your service this evening. Thank you.
Just one question on the study session. Will you outline, as it comes to us, what you think some of the options are in terms of the, the proposed density, whether more density would be appropriate? And lay out what you think can be done as well as what they're proposing?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to look at issues of density. I want to look at issues of height. I want to look at parking. And so after we go through the specific project itself, I'd like to lead the planning commission through a discussion of those items. And I think this will, project will help to illustrate some of those issues.
Thank you.
Flynn, can I let you know tomorrow after I check the schedule?
Yeah, absolutely.
Unfortunately, I'm, I'm still a working man.
I know. We hate to do that to you, Commissioner Urban, but unfortunately, we've got a full agenda on that day, so we do need to start early if we can. But yeah, I'll look forward to your call tomorrow.
Glenn, if Mr. Urban can't attend, could we do that study session on another night?
Yeah, we absolutely could do a special meeting as long as we have adequate notice of the agenda.
So I think that, especially on this housing issue, but in general, I think we want, we do want to have Commissioner Urban in attendance.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I, I should, I should be able to get away. I'll, I'll let you guys know. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'm going to adjourn our planning commission until our special meeting at four, tentative special meeting at 4 o'clock on Wednesday, May 26th, and for our regular meeting at 5:30 on Wednesday, May 26th. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. There's daylight. Daylight.